Good evening. Thank you all for coming to the City Council meeting. If you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and kind Father, we thank you for your spirit of thanksgiving in this season. We thank you for the fellowship that we've enjoyed. We pray your blessings over our mayor and the City Council on this evening that every decision that will be made will honor and be pleasing to you. We thank you for the leadership of the City Council. We pray for fathership right now. After decisions have been made, we pray that you see us home safely and find everything that we left as we left it. We bless this in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Moving right along about items on tonight's, items by the citizens that are not about items on tonight's agenda. Anything that you would like to stand and address the City Council about items not on tonight's agenda, you're more than welcome. Please.
Mayor Harrington, City Manager Peterson, City Council. I've been here several times over the past five years. I was a resident starting in March of eighteen. My first interaction with the city was-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address?
Stephen Christopher, two-ten North Nettleton. My first interaction with the city was as I got my first water bill. That was a prorated bill for six months because they weren't reading my meter. And that was my first interaction with the city. We'll move forward several years to what I think might be, play into what's been talked about, I guess, in your meeting here a little bit earlier regarding turning off a people's water bill. As far as the communication methods, I would describe them as being archaic at best. I know that everybody has their own excuse as far as why or may not, they may have not paid their water bill. Unlike your home mortgage, they don't evict you from your house if you don't pay your mortgage that month. But when you turn somebody's water off, it basically makes their home uninhabitable. I say that to say is, is that since May, I moved my family, due to a death of my family, back to Ohio. I've been coming back and forth over the past several months in order to be able to vacate the house and to make it so that I could potentially make it a rental, which is what I came here in the first place five years ago, was to potentially invest in this community. I came back to find that my water was turned off. In fact, I had not paid the bill, though I had made a bill pay. My particular bank, apparently, when they had some sort of thing going on with their computer system, my check that gets sent via bill pay did not get sent that day. So we enjoyed Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night, and then Monday without water. Unfortunately, I had to leave town. I spoke to Mr. Harrington, of which I've done on many occasions. I'm very grateful for his time, just as I am with Mr. Peterson, as far as to listen to some of my concerns over the years. In the case as far as the communications method, of course, they sent me a letter. Well, I'm not having my mail forwarded. I have it left at the post office. And then I got the two notices. Well, I'm not here to see the two notices. And as was suggested, the communications method, whether it be an email or a text, not a robocall. If there's a hundred people a month in a community this large, it would seem reasonable that you could make some effort, because I know the people, as I've observed when they were in the gym as far as working, as well as just today I observed. You know, there's a certain amount of time, I think, can be set aside on the benefit of the citizens as far as to do an outreach for something as important as water. As a matter of fact, in the state of Kansas, if this was a privately held community, water system, whether it be electric, or water, or gas, and I was mistaken when I spoke to Ms. Tilly the other day, because when I called the state to find out about it, that commission's, the Kansas Corporation Commission, has a cold water situation, excuse me, they have a cold weather rule that between November first until March thirty-first, you're not allowed to turn off somebody's utilities. Now, interestingly, when I spoke to those folks, I said, could you give me the list of communities that have signed up for that? Well, he said, there's not been a single community. He says, it's only if you're, it's a privately held system. And I wonder why those particular communities who have private investors that are providing services to their residents are held to a different standard than us as a community here in Bonner Springs, or any other community throughout the state. So I turned you to here today, is I got my water turned back on. My wife and son didn't get to have a shower. I left to go out of town to go to a funeral over the weekend, so I got to have my shower before they did. I think I need to think long and hard, as far as one of the services we provide is water, and that's an item that everybody has to have. And if we're in such bad shape that we have to turn people's water off if there's a hundred people late, I don't know, maybe we're in bad shape. I know that I made a special trip back to vote, because when I was here last time, there was, I think, a point-two-five percent thing that needed to be voted on. I don't know the details. I didn't read up on it. I just heard that the city needed it. I drove back from Ohio, not only to vote for that, but to vote for Mike Thompson to be our legislator in this particular area. And I will turn to him as far as the suggestion, as far as making that Kansas Corporation Commission cold weather rule possibly applicable to the communities. Having said that, with my experience of having my water turned off here recently, why does it cost me sixty percent of my water bill just to get my water bill turned back on? I've used very little water in the past seven months. My water bill was two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars for the water usage. My sewer bill was four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. You have a flat rate that you charge for sewer. I've questioned from the very beginning as far as the charges of the water here, and anybody you speak to in this community will state that the water, first of all, is of very poor quality. I invested a large amount of money to have a reverse osmosis water system and a water softing system that still has fifty grains of hardness after going through all of that. And then yet, I'm spending more for sewer, even though I'm not putting any water through it? I find that interesting. I will give you an example. I'm a person that had real estate in Johnson County that was rentals, and my water bill here was always higher than anything else I had in Johnson County, even with tenants that were more than the three in my family. I have a fourplex now in Ohio. It has six people in it. My water bill is a hundred-and-eighteen dollars a month, mostly because I'm not spending sixty-six, seventy-five a month for my sewer. In summary, I'm hoping that you guys will, you know, more seriously consider, you know, what was discussed here today, because I think it's a very important point. And though, again, people do sometimes mistakenly not pay their bills, it's probably not in bad faith. I did not hear the circumstances, and it sounds like there was something that occurred between possibly somebody that was trying to address the water issue and the residents, and of course, that's never acceptable. But I do think as a small community, we can be proactive and reach out to our constituents in the manner of something as important as water. Don't turn people's water off, especially during the wintertime. You don't know if they have a boiler system, so not only do they not have water, they may not have heat. I appreciate the opportunity. I've enjoyed my time here. And again, Mayor, I appreciate your efforts, and Sean as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Anyone else that would like to stand and address the City Council about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda includes minutes from the November fourteenth City Council meeting, claims for city operation, a massage therapy business establishment, and massage therapist license for Jody Swish at Massage by Jody. Anything to be pulled by staff, citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Still moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Reeves, seconded by Mr. Shannon. Comments, questions? Seeing none, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to item number one, the Kansas Avenue Culvert Replacement Project. Bids and easements.
Good evening. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This is an item that we brought forth in September to go ahead and pursue the engineering and design work associated with replacing two sixty-inch corrugated metal pipes that essentially are in a state of failure underneath Kansas Avenue. And design has since been completed, and we have project estimates, and we've identified where we expect to get the funding. We're before you today to talk about, well, anything you want to related to the project, but also seek authorization to pursue bids and to pursue the easements we need on the south side of Kansas Avenue. With that, I'd entertain any questions.
Very good. Any other staff comments? Seeing none. Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve, oops, sorry, make a motion to authorize staff to pursue construction bids and easements for the Kansas Avenue Culvert Replacement Project.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens, and we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments. Mr. Shannon.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Normally, this would come from the stormwater fund, but there's not capacity in the stormwater fund. Yeah.
No question. That's what I want to say. Thank you for being on top of it before there's a disaster.
Yeah.
I noticed that it was going to be a little bit of an extended closure of Kansas Avenue if we, when we pursue, go forward with this. Have we worked out any details on how we're going to try to reroute the traffic around there?
So I'll speak for a few minutes on this, if you're okay with that. Essentially, we intend to pursue a couple of different options in the bid, and then we'll bring that package to the council. But essentially, we know we're going to need at least probably a two-full-week closure at this area in order to tear out the old and at least put back enough to provide one or two lanes of traffic. After that, we can work on both ends of this under traffic, we believe. So we would like to submit and request bids from contractors. Okay, what is it going to cost for a two-week closure? What would it cost for a three-week closure? And maybe even a four-week closure, to kind of determine what that value is going to be to us. But yes, there'll be emergency services, all kinds of disruption there, because all that traffic's going to have to, most of it anyway, go down one-hundred-and-thirty-eighth.
One-hundred-and-thirty-eighth all the way down to Morris, or to Metropolitan, I guess.
So that is something that we need to take into consideration when we get those values back.
Okay.
What is that worth to us as a city?
I just didn't know if there was a plan outside of somehow getting around that without having to take such a long day to.
We'll ask for that kind of an option as well when we do this. Do you have a better idea?
Okay.
And they might. Sometimes they come up with something better.
That was my only question.
Yeah.
Nothing here.
I know you, you guys are strapped pretty thin, but it's amazing what our public utility workers can do. Is there options that they could be able to tear some of this out, or do any of this work internally?
Probably not, because you're going to be working so close to the roadway anyway. If you do some of this, you probably better have a contract ready with a contractor in the event. Once you start messing with some of these, in this case, very old, poor condition, corrugated metal pipes, you don't want the whole thing to just fall in on you when you start cutting or pulling on one end or the other. I wouldn't advise it, I guess, knowing what is there.
Frank, how old are-
Good idea, though.
How old are those existing pipes? Do you know?
I do not know. I don't.
But this new solution will last us for?
You're going to go from corrugated metal pipe that deteriorates to concrete box culvert.
Decades.
Decades. Yeah.
Anything else? Other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to the stormwater standards upgrade agreement.
Frank Abart, Public Works Director. I have before you tonight an agreement to help participate in a, I guess I'm going to call it a region-wide effort, spearheaded by the American Public Works Association, the Kansas City Chapter, to update the stormwater standards that are used throughout this whole region. And Mark is actually going to do the work and the organized effort, and they're looking for a contribution, of course, from each of the participating agencies in the area. I believe attached as well, at least I have it in my documents, should have been an attachment that shows all the other agencies and what their contributions will be, so you can compare what Bonner Springs effort would be compared to everybody else's. And I think it's a fair participation amount for us and our size. We have some things to gain from this in that it kind of already automatically makes us in compliance with certain things associated with our stormwater permit, and it also receives the blessing of KDHE, who endorses this, the standards for the region. So we have some advantages for being at the table and being a part of it. Beyond that, I would like to answer any questions.
Very good. Other staff? Questions? Citizens, questions or concerns? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the stormwater standards update agreement with Mark and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here. Mr. Reeves.
It's not a large amount, but since we've had some of our issues with our county government slash UG, I notice on here we have Johnson County as a governmental entity, is, you know, providing, funding, as well as many of the individual cities. So I know this isn't a question you could answer, Mr. Abart, but I might pose this to Sean, that you might kind of ask the UG government, the UG's amount, is that all coming out of county funds? Or is the, is that a certain percentage of it county and a percentage of it KCK budget? Because if, if it's coming strictly out of county, then we shouldn't be paying anything.
And I, I have no idea.
No, I know you wouldn't. And I know Sean is probably not aware one way or the other without asking.
I'll reach out to their staff and then get some clarification on that and let you all know.
I would appreciate that. Nothing else?
Yeah, because we're, looks like we're getting a great deal.
Do we need to hold off on approving this until we get that answer?
I, I, there we go. I wouldn't. Ultimately, if the county is putting it in or not, I think we could always come back with an amendment or some type of reimbursement, if in fact they're only using one side of the pie or the other.
And it seems as though those, oftentimes unified governments put down when they mean Kansas City, Kansas, as opposed to the different places those funds come from. And we're trying our very best across lots of different areas to keep that as appropriate as possible. So seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to item number three, the twenty-three through twenty-seven Capital Improvement Plan.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. We're asking for approval of the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-seven Capital Improvement Plan. This includes capital improvements such as buildings and that type of improvement, as well as equipment purchases. We do this each year. Last year, the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six was approved, and each year, the main one that we're approving is the two thousand twenty-three, and then we review it each year. So what's in twenty-six this year probably isn't the same as what it was last year, because we, we look at that and revise it as circumstances change. So we're just asking for approval of the plan. It includes two-point-five million in capital improvements for two thousand twenty-three and nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred of equipment purchases for two thousand twenty-three.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff?
The only thing I'm going to add on, on this is hopefully a little bit of the obvious. The, the numbers that were put into this are reflective of six months ago. They're going to change in six months from now, when they've already changed from six months prior. So I just want to be clear on that. I think that's in the, in the memo as well, that there likely will be, there will need to be adjustments based off of price changes or fluctuations, as well as availability. I was talking to Frank earlier this morning, and I mean, vehicles is an obvious one, where we're not entirely sure when we're going to get a vehicle, so are we better served by allocating those funds for a piece of equipment that we know we need and is available? So I guess my point is, this isn't probably the last time you're going to see this document as far as operational year two thousand twenty-three is concerned, simply because of those reasons. But that was all I had.
Very good. Questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Seeing none. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-seven Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start here.
I thought it was incredibly well laid out and everything. We can't walk along
Matt Zayas did most of this work. I'm just presenting. Excuse me. Yeah.
Who did it?
Matt Zayas.
Since he's not here anymore, thank you, Tilly.
Sean, to your point about things changing, I noticed one of the items in here was gem lighting in the community center. That's already been done, so that will just be adjusted as we allocate those funds?
Yeah, so we had the grant funding that came in, which made that more, it was prioritized and allowed through the grant. So, yeah, we would come back to those types of things and say, okay, obviously, we're not going to do that anymore. But this is reflective of the budget, so this document was put together as we were working through the budget year. So any of the conversation that we had as part of the two thousand twenty-three budgeting is what is more or less being proven. But again, it'll, it'll inevitably change, and when those changes occur, we'll bring, if, you know, if it's a piece of equipment or something, you know, if the item changes or the cost fluctuates, in which case we would need, you know, obviously, more money, those things will need to come back to you all. So that's a hint for all department heads that are here. We'll need to come back to reprogram should those things come up.
Thank you.
I thank you, Sean. You did answer one question, that is, on the document, in that, that this was prepared prior to the, the, you know, voter approval of the sales tax initiatives, because I noticed those were not spread out in revenues in subsequent years.
No, I'm glad you, I was going to mention that, too, so I'm glad you pointed that out. Yeah, that was also part of the budgeting complication this year in putting this together, was not having a clear understanding of whether or not that was going to pass or not. So yes, thank you.
And then the other thing, I'm assuming out in two thousand twenty-seven, that's more of a placeholder for a projection of what we might need on a joint agency facility?
Yeah, I would tell you that most, I would really only focus on two thousand twenty-three. Everything else is pie in the sky, as far as I'm concerned. But what it does show is it shows some strategic thought going into those types of things, or multi-year budgeting that also comes up. I think we've got some fire apparatus that are in there that, again, I mean, if we went out and tried to buy an aerial today, at one point, I used to say it was one-point-five million. It's probably more than that now. We're not going to buy that in a single budget year. So we tried to structure that. So that's, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight Street, I think, is a big project, that that's how we've been budgeting that in the capital, is we've been putting away X amount of money over the last several years. Now we've built up the capacity to make that payment, as opposed to having to take a temporary loan out and paying interest or something.
Thank you. I noticed on here, one of the things that was mentioned almost in passing, the farmer's market pavilion, I take it now after listening to you, it's more than a one-year program for that.
Yeah, that's been, I think next year is reflective of two years of putting money into.
Two-fifty this year and then two-fifty next year, so we'll purchase it next year.
Yeah, so you've got, so, yeah, so we've put in, we have a half a million dollars to put into that structure, but that's been a multi-year effort to build up that capacity for the last two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Capital Improvement Plan is a exercise that is, it's a living document. It's one that's fluid and changes with priorities as the priorities of the city change. And this is a planning tool that I can remember when we didn't have a capital improvement plan. And it, it's vital to being able to provide the services in an economic, in an economic manner. So thank you to everyone, Matt, and all the city staff that have worked this up or updated this and continue to update it. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else? Vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. I would love to have more input from community members on all the different aspects of this community, of this capital improvement plan. This is, really speaks to the, the direction the city's going in. And when people ask, what are we doing? This is it. This is where we're going, and we'll have to watch every single line item on it. But it's encouraging. On to the next item. Number four, approve a notice of public hearing and schedule a public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two budget amendments.
Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. The two thousand twenty-two budget, we've got three funds that are going to probably exceed their approved budget, the budget we approved last August. The first one is the park dedication fund, that fitness court that was approved at the last meeting. We were spending park dedication funds, but they're not budgeted. So the funds, the cash is there, but we need to do a budget amendment to be able to spend them this year. And the second one is the Bonner Springs Center, Sid, city contribution. That, I think, might go over by about five thousand. So that's just because we've received more sales tax than we budgeted that we need to pay back to the developer. And then the cemetery fund, we did a sex monument repair that came in higher than was anticipated. We're getting some donated funds to help cover that cost, but we still have to amend the budget to be able to spend those funds. So this is just to approve a hearing notice. The notice has to go on the page- The notice has to go in the paper ten days before the hearing, which will be on the nineteenth. So this is just approving the notice to go into the paper, and then we'll have the hearing on the nineteenth.
Very good. Anything else from other staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the public hearing notice and schedule a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-two budget amendments.
Second.
Moved and seconded by, moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Long. I don't know that there's any discussion necessary since we're sitting in a public hearing. Seeing none, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
I couldn't hear you, sorry. Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. On to, that's the end of our new business, on to our reports tonight, the first of which are city managers' reports.
To the mayor's earlier point, I do want to, thank you. Boss, can you hear me? All right, there we go. I do want to point out, we do have two surveys out currently. One is geared towards recreation programming and just asking the community about recreation programs. So again, that is available for folks to take part in. And then also the Farmer's Market Pavilion, that was a big part of the Farmer's Market this year, was trying to solicit ideas as to where that needed to go. We've now taken the next step of trying to solicit some input as to what people would like to see in the design features of that, accessibilities and things like that. So again, those two surveys are out there currently. Excuse me. I, I do want to make mention of an individual's passing. Tom Cooley was a longtime public servant here in Wyandotte County. He is, as far as I know, probably the only individual to have worked for the City of Edwardsville, the City of Bonner Springs, and the Unified Government. Tom was a really neat guy. I spent a couple of really early morning breakfasts with him, and Tom knows what I'm referring to with Kiwanis. But again, he passed away this, this past week, so. Also want to make mention of two programs the city's been working on. The Police Department had been working through KLEA, which is an accreditation and standardization program. They did apply for CASP funding, which helps to offset the expenses related to taking that on. We were awarded that grant. I think Chief Naff is, is working on some particulars to bring back for that, so that is a, is a good thing. And then we were also recently notified that we did achieve the Bronze Status for the Community of All Ages, which is a program sponsored by the Medicare Mid-American Regional Council, there we go, that really looks at the inclusiveness of a community and really gearing programs and your built environment and the like, to ensure that everybody has access to those regardless of their age. And then there will be a, a presentation at a future council meeting as well for that, so. And then lastly, I just want to make note that I have been working with the Unified Government on our solid waste agreement that we have. So for everybody's benefit, since, oh gosh, nineteen ninety-four, the city has had a agreement to piggyback on solid waste with, at the time, Kansas City, Kansas. Surprise probably for nobody, that agreement hasn't really been updated since nineteen ninety-four. That being said, there have been certain items that have been added onto that by way of program offering that we have the opportunity to no longer participate in. These are items like administrative fees and things of that nature that I'm not going to, I don't want to get into all the particulars of it, but the gist of it is that they'd have a meeting earlier today with their legal counsel going over that, and unless, of course, anybody has any big concerns, I, I plan to send a letter over to the Unified Government notifying them that we will continue to utilize their services for trash pickup and recycling pickup, but all other programs that they have added on to this are not things that we want to continue to participate in. It is my understanding, once we do that, we would be able to reduce that total expense that we pay, or rather, charge to our customers as well. So it's coming a little bit quickly, and I'm bringing it up tonight because in our agreement, there is a four-year window. Every four years, we can opt to cease additional programs, and this so happens to be one of those years, twenty-twenty-two. So obviously, as we're getting into December, that's critical to get that over to them. So again, made them aware of that some time ago, and I don't see any hiccups with that, but I wanted you all to be aware that that's coming together. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that now or later, if anybody has any. But other than that, that is all I have this evening.
Great. Are those administrative fees or, since we do our own billing and?
There are, there are certain programs that are allowed within our agreement to be billed for. I would tell you that of the additional items that we are being paid for outside of trash pickup and recycling pickup, none of those additional programs are programs that we agreed to in nineteen ninety-four. That, that answer, that will open up another question about whether or not, what do we do with what we've paid into these things? But for all intents and purposes, at this juncture, I'd rather just stop doing what we're doing, and then we can address those other items later on, but there, yeah, there's a, there's a litany of things in there.
Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead with the city council items, and we'll start right here. We started with everybody but you.
I don't have anything to say.
Very good. Nothing? Ma'am?
I just want to say I'm amazed what the library is doing for teens and for the different age groups and everything. And I kind of want to go to some of them.
You can do that as a city council representative.
Right. And the Saturday, December third, is going to be quite colorful.
Yes, colorful. Oh, the Christmas tree lighting.
Yeah, I just wanted to take just a minute or two to thank four individuals. The, I thought, I know our council residents and the City of Edwardsville, their councilman residents have had concerns about not always being considered full members of the UG experiment. And recently, it was no, no more evident than with the second of the ARPA funding, when zero dollars were allocated to Bonner Springs and Edwardsville for anything in these areas. And four individuals representing our area made a very strong case of that we needed to be full participants. They, even though a few commissioners were not really wanting to, they were trying to argue and try to justify their lack of fairness, I'll put it that way. I think the argument was made and convinced the commissioners to see that it, it wasn't in fact unfair, and did some, did some things hopefully to make it better. Those four individuals are District at Large, Tom Burrows, District Seven Commissioner, Chuck Stites, Mayor Carolyn Kahar of Edwardsville, and our own Mayor, Jeff Harrington of Bonner Springs. With that, a heartfelt thank you, Mayor.
Nothing further.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, it was a group effort, but we did go to the, Mayor Kahar and I did go to the Unified Government Commission meeting and provided testimony concerning the ARPA funds that were allocated. They, we attempted to participate in that application for those funds and weren't successful through their procedures, and we made a strong point in how that wasn't as fair as what it could have been, since we are not, not separate from the county, we are a part of the county, and they are, they function as our county representatives. So we're, it, it brought a lot of concerns to light. They are certainly aware that we're a part of our community and not neighbors. We're a, a part of Wyandotte County, and it was eye-opening for me as well. And I think some of the county commissioners need to recognize that their responsibilities are to the entire county and not just to a small portion of it from which they were elected, just like our city council here is representative of the different wards, but you're challenged to do what you think is best for the entire city, and that governance is very important to local communities, so. It looks as though we have been earmarked, both Bonner and Edwardsville, for about one point three, one point two million dollars, one point something million dollars of funds that will, of course, have to meet all the guidelines. All of our, our applications met the guidelines, but they weren't, they weren't regarded as, as that. But we're working through that, so it'll be, it's a work in progress, so we're looking forward to that joint cooperation. It's also kind of a sweet sorrow that I would like to congratulate Councilman Thompson on his recent win as a representative for the state of Kansas. However, in, in talking with him, I think he feels the best way he can serve our community is for him to devote his full time to the Kansas State House of Representatives, and is going to be stepping down as a city councilman. So with that news, I would like to recognize him for all of his hard work, and all of you know, all the city council know what that entails, and I'm, I'm so glad that you all help as much as you do. But we'll be accepting applications for that position from Ward One, and you can get those applications. It's essentially the same one for volunteer, volunteering through our city clerk, Christina Break, and turn those in directly to her. And as we have had situations similar to this in the past, we will collect those applications, forward it to a special task force of past mayors who will review that, make a recommendation to me, that I'll bring a recommendation to the city council, and you will approve that or reprove, approve a replacement for that city council seat. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that in the process and have that take place just after the first of the year, when he takes his position at the legislature, when Councilman Thompson takes his place in the legislature as a Kansas representative. Don't want to step on any toes there. Phew. Looking forward to the Christmas tree lighting. This Christmas tree, the mayor's Christmas tree, is taller than it's ever been before. Knowing where that started at, that's quite an accomplishment, and it is very colorful. It's, it's multicolored, twinkling, multicolored, so it's, it's, the city does such a good job with the decorations down in Centennial Park, and I appreciate all the city that does that, all the different parts of the city that does that. Question, do we have a employee Christmas thing coming up, or?
I believe the Employee Engagement Committee was working on that currently, so I think details are still forthcoming.
Very good. Well, I wish them the best and wish them happy holidays, and would like to invite all the city councils to please make that opportunity to be involved in that. It's a great, a great place to see all the wonderful city workers, not here. Or maybe it will be in this space, I don't know, but not under these circumstances. Yeah, and I, we'll continue to go over the Unified Government, Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County, with encouraging them to recognize Bonner Springs and Edwardsville and our, our place in the county. I'm involved with the Special Task Force for the County Administrator Selection Committee, and they certainly know that we're a part of the county, so the new administrator will have that information as well, so. And that, I have to recognize Mayor Garner, as well as Councilman Stites and Councilman, or Commissioner Stites and Commissioner Burrows on, on how well we are received. They are very respectful and appropriate, and it is a culture that is slowly changing, and they are a part of that change initiative, so. Very glad for that. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add. The Christmas parade is coming up. Please join in all of that Christmasing, and hope everyone had a nice holiday for Thanksgiving, and looking forward to the Christmas holiday. Please stay safe and shop local. Other than that, I stand for questions.
Just real quickly, I might add on that, the meeting was the full commission meeting on November seventeenth, I think it was.
Oh, boy, there you're better known.
I think it was November seventeenth. If you get an opportunity, go listen to it, and, and it's an interesting conversation, I'll say that.
Yep. We, yes, it was interesting, that's a good way to put it. No other questions? We're adjourned.